Black political allegiance to the flag of the United States of America into the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
And that Tim I was on my way up there and he was on the way home, so I'm assuming if he comes it'll be late, but I didn't talk.
The next thing is through the minutes for the last meeting, March twenty-third. And I sent a number of copies or and such, and I said, but I don't know if you got them, I sent out copies out with the corrections.
No, I get the note saying you've done some spelling corrections, but I didn't see the actual corrections, but there's no material, the words weren't changed, just corrected spelling, so I moved we approved the minutes for the spelling corrections.
I know, second panel.
So this motion by Harold, second by Chris to approve the minutes with the spelling corrections. No, I think I sent to, I hope I sent it to you, well, let me, when you, when you see this. Hello. Thank you. Next is department reports and this is short. Do you want to go, Paul?
Yeah, sure. We have your, your activity reports for the month of March in front of you, if you have any questions on that, I'd like to answer them. We hired a cleaning woman to do four hours a week over PD coming in on Saturday mornings. She's been vetted, she's the cleaning lady for our with the PD, so he had her background checked on everything, good, so we're compliant sales with the audit. As you know, last Wednesday, busy day from PD, we ended up three o'clock in the morning dealing with a bunch of people up in Perkins, New Corolla area. In a stolen vehicle, we ended up making five arrests. Kind of problematic getting them all back to the station at once, but we managed with the help of Windsor and kind of the sheriff's office. And everybody, we called in everybody that morning to come in and it worked out very well. We got it all processed and brought rail, it was a trying day, we ended up seizing drugs. One of that is sent to the lab, we got some nap and some what we believe to be fentanyl, thirty-eight grams of fentanyl and two or three grams of crystal nap on the vehicle, vehicle had been reported stolen on a green building and ended up in our neighborhood. Last Thursday, anyway, the department meeting, we started our, our training with the new software system and stolen system. And we're on to the yearly test for fire extinguisher training, bloodborne pathogens, sexual harassment training. That started, going to be completed by the end of the month. Also on April eighteenth, there's going to be individuals in the intersection of Maycom Road and one thirty-five there with the University of Southern Maine, and they're doing in partnership with the Major Highway Safety. They're going to be doing a traffic study on distracted drivers. So that's going to be from roughly twelve-thirty in the afternoon till one-thirty. And they're doing it different locations statewide during the entire month of April. If you see a tire park there and someone standing on the side of the road with a tablet and a piece of paper and pen, that's what they're there.
Chief, is that, is that study about folks using cell phone?
Yes.
USM, University of Southern.
Thank you. Yeah.
Yes, good evening, public works. Sound like a broken record. I've got pieces of equipment that are broke, out of service on my loader. The steering system went on it, it's a hydraulic electronic system, parts are on order. Launcher will be down until early next week. Made our days creative in how to get stuff done that we use the order to do, but we will, we're getting by and we'll get by until it's fixed. One of the dump trucks, the twenty-ten international. We were hauling gravel. Or making repairs when dirt roads develop a mud season. And as it was lifting up, the pins underneath on the scissor mechanism sheared, the bed slammed down on the truck and that truck is now at the metal fat shop. Having to have it cleaned on the side of the bed. Replaced, rewelded. That's been there for a few days. I don't expect to see that truck back till sometime next week or the week after. It's unfortunate, but I'd, I'd I'd answer more questions about it in a different setting, but obviously that's it's an issue and it'll be in there and be safe. There's been a lot of discussion about the Wilson Pond Brook fair road and, and we've been watching the culvert all spring that's right there, this is where the entrance to the campground. With we discovered we had a little bit of degradation in the culvert on the bog side, which if you're going into the campground, you have the left side of looking up to your left side. A little bit of a collapse at the very end. Upon further investigation, we've seen there's possibly some more issues there with water flow. Not going through the culvert, but around it. So we are having some engineers come in and take a look at what is going on there and what may need to be done in the future. We've been working with the B.E.R.C. Now renamed Jellystone Heart of Augusta Campground, the new orders, what's their private dam that they have and we have with their cooperation, we've lowered the water significantly on the right side of the road to take the pressure off the culvert. So it'll be an ongoing evaluation to see what's going to be done there.
What diameter is the culvert?
That hole is a forty-inch hole, it's forty by forty feet long, forty-eight inch wide hole. It was, and looking through the records, it was that cul, particular culvert, it's been about twenty years ago. Just unfortunately, one side of it has shown some degradation and partial unsure why, but it has a, it has a break in the top of it, which I think is the extra weight is kind of weakened size, it's now instead of the water, just getting through the culvert, it's getting out of the culvert as well, so what was hopefully going to be a simple repair is starting to look a little more complex.
It's only the top of the water, it's only the top of it on that one side, so it's, yeah, it's not doing its job. Yeah. I've seen, and I don't know if this is relevant or not, the culvert liners for things that size. Is that a possibility?
I'm gonna let the engineers, unfortunately, there's, I think there's a lot of options, the engineers guide us to make sure that whatever we do there is safe. Because there's a, at certain times of the year, there's a lot of water flowing through there and you don't wanna, we don't wanna lose that, we don't wanna we don't wanna put a Band-Aid on instead of blowout.
So the culvert itself is cracked or there is just, culvert itself is cracked
in, in looks like three places. And then allowing the water to get where, get some of the most severe beginning of the month, so I would say it's a concern, we don't want that to fail going into there, busy season, disrupt a lot of people that are coming here, getting across that. I guess we've got the water level down, we've got the pressure off of it. But at this point, I know I was initially gonna say we're gonna, we're gonna take up half the road, we're gonna fix half the culvert with sleeve, we'll be good to go. As we got, as the water level came down, you're even set closer. I just took a step back and said, I think we need to have an engineer to be this, to make sure that we do the right steps.
And what's, what's the new name of B.E.R.C.?
Jellystone Heart of Augusta, I believe is what I wrote there.
And are they gonna be requesting a change in the road name?
Oh, they've asked the road to be paved, but they haven't asked to change the name. So.
I guess it's Wilson Pond up there, isn't it, all the way to the end?
It is Wilson Pond all the way to the end, but it's for this, or usually to make sure we get people in the right direction, we just call it, we call the dirt section B.E.R.C. road as a, this. So, yeah. On the better news, we've transitioned into some spring cleanup. Starting to clean up the grass, you know, all the dirt we put down and, and getting things cleaned up, so like, you know, all the visual dirt stuff they left and hopefully we'll be lifting postings on the tar roads early next week. I'm gonna leave the gravel roads probably till first of May and then watch the weather from there. Oh, and most likely next week, by that loader's back in service, we'll start putting the docks in on cotton wagon and Wilson Pond. I know people are itching to get their boats in the water and so that's all I have at the moment.
I have a couple of questions. The beach road railing was on that. When's that happening?
They're supposed to already be done.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I was told two weeks ago by the engineer that they would be put in, two weeks ago. I, oh, I, I will start calling David instead of weekly now.
And I had a, had a, some folks ask me about how far back those railings are going. Because if you're headed towards the beach, they're off of the sidewalk, it's like a perfect little belly that anybody could ride their bicycle down there, so people into
Yeah, I
That, so I don't know how far back, but people mentioned to me, they were like, well, any little kid could, you know, ride a bike off into there. And knowing little kids.
I have not seen engineering plans, I, I've never, I've not seen what the design of the railings is.
Yeah, my next question is, I don't think that either woodie lines are working now in twenty-five. So I walked by there, the other one that is, was positioned towards south, it doesn't seem blinking.
I, I have a call in to get the O.T.s, have the O.D. to take care of it.
Yeah, we can't figure something.
I did try to work on the one by the town office. And I had an hour's worth of labor, it was unsuccessful, so it was special. And the one by, by Stevens, that, that just went out this week. I actually got a call from one of the officers on Zouy that he's been on the side across the street.
Yeah, blew down and now it's missing.
I have it.
You have it, okay. And somebody asked me, I said, well, hopefully the, the police with Public Works picked it up.
It didn't look like it blew down, it looked like it was sheared on.
The bolts were gone permanent, so, and I, I don't know, who knows?
The bottom of the post.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, oops, somebody had oops.
Yeah. Yeah. And my last question is the welcome to Mon things in the Sorry, the welcome to Mon signs and the American flags.
Yes, the loader has our basket.
So you can't do that over the state, but when you run into these flags, just reject me, because the American region, one that are doing the before, so I just wanted to let you know, after now, but I know some of those American flags.
Yeah, I, I believe we've got replacement flags in the fall, we just put down, we can store them and have them ready to go.
Okay, great.
Again, that, that loader is
Yeah, exactly.
So we were gonna do it this week, we're gonna swap them out.
Thank you.
Did you just follow up on a couple of meetings ago, actually last meeting, have you been able to make contact or repeat call phone about his evaluation of what needs to be done?
I have. Yes, I've asked, I've made contact with him, a little bit of the gravel specs and where coordinating a time to, to this, I didn't look at the road personally and come up with a, make sure that the spec that he has in mind, what user effects is inappropriate.
There's also coming
Seems like the bird.
Hello there.
I came to take a look at it, it's just, it's hard to, it's hard to manage, but I'm having our system.
System.
I can't keep an eye on it, so I don't, I don't know.
Is that really important? I mean, better for us to be able to see them and I think for you to be able to see them a lot of the end. I don't think they need to see us. If it's not a problem.
I don't have to come back.
This will be, this will be able to follow.
Those speakers will say their names, she'll hear it.
So.
Yeah, I think it'll be okay for a while.
But this weekend, firefighters, the six of us traveling to Edensburg, Maryland for the national fire test. Beach party. On the calendar, it's gonna be July second. Water weekend on Saturday, already pulled the state permits. Great show, still trying to line up the dam, but get that finalized, we'll start posting information. Getting out there, sponsorship, fire should be going out next, probably three or four weeks. Those looking forward to that event, hoping people done, um, roads, get back to normal. Burning permits. Had a few issues, I think I was, last week, wordreport.com, obtaining online permits. It's, it's something with the system, hopefully it's gonna work out, if not, I just wanted to put an informational thing out that you can still get online permits for service. And now that's a free permit, it used to be a seven-dollar fee and they've since changed that. You can either get one free through locally through wordreport.com or through the state permit system. Yeah, just, just Google main forest service and you'll see a little icon for
Or you can go to main.gov.
It is through main.gov, that's. And the state firm is actually good for two weeks, so sometimes there's an advantage to the state firm. Both of them go to the firefighters as far as competition.
The dinner?
Oh, thank you. Thanks for your response to that. Yes, no?
Is it next weekend?
Yeah, the sixteenth, yeah, next week.
I know, I have a, I've got to I have to check where Jeffrey is, if Jeffrey's gone, then I can't, so I don't know what he needs to do.
We're expecting about a hundred and twenty people. This is our annual fire department dinner. At five P.M. on Saturday night. We moved it from the middle of winter to spring, hoping that we wouldn't have any storms or anything.
Now, if you don't have a brush fire, you'll be all set.
Yeah, it, it is drying up out there. People starting to get out in the yard. But so far, high, high fire. Any other questions?
Library director.
I'm Julie Sawtelle, Director of Compton Public Library. Um, the library's gearing up for our usual busy summer season, we get a lot of seasonal residents coming back. Seems, it seems to me library doubles in, in business every summer. But we love our summer residents and they miss us, they come back, they just, you know, they're, they're really excited to be back in Mon, that says a lot for the town. Um, and we're also starting to plan our annual kind of reading events, are officially looking at some creative meters for very young kids, maybe three to five, five to seven. We're talking about doing an adult meditation program, maybe we'll have one, she's never done that before, but you know, every good thing, everybody can use more peace in their life. And, you know, especially after COVID, which isn't, you know, any coping mechanism is, is good. We'll do our usual arts and crafts programs also. And we, we, we feature as much local support as we can get, we've got, you know, usually we get the, the markets to donate a free slurp or your ice cream cone for kids and weekends, so we do a lot of like we have a free pass to the state public parks and we do Old Fort Western. Possibly this year we'll do Gray Animal Farm. But anyway, we, we have a lot of fun and a lot of reading gets done and we just try and try to keep it, you know, positive, it's all about the kids and reading. In between now and then, there'll be a big main fair for those that don't know, every year, friends in the library collaborate and we do sales of local perennial plants that people dug and donated, and we also do flowers from, from maybe monk fellas or, or maybe margos and sometimes herbs and, and vegetables too. And that is going to be, I forget the exact date, but it's the weekend prior to the more of the weekend. But there'll be a lot of announcements and you'll see a lot of busy stuff in the parking lot as we're getting ready for that. Folks may not know that the library is now trying to build up to something called, in the industry, the library of things. So not only do we do books, magazines, videos, we're also branching out into stuff that people might want to try before they buy. We've had great luck loaning an extendable pole burner for B.T.B.'s for Brown and Alon. And the first person that I went out to, while I would be the online rookie for a sheep, protect the blade, he made us one. This is the kind of people we have in Mon, you know, he just did this riveted cover and brought it in and garlic and cave, got a oven, like, that's just so great. We've got heavy duty shoe stretcher, looks like a medieval weapon, it's solid, it probably weighs five pounds. We've got a whole spectrum magnet for people experience speechful affective disorder. And yesterday I went to the state library, they're talking about possibly funding and providing libraries with e-bikes. One might be able to lend an e-bike to someone who, oh, they'd like to try it before they spend the twenty-five hundred bucks or whatever it is. So we might run that out for a week for people to explore. So, you know, we're, we're trying to keep up with the times and provide stuff that people want, not everybody's gonna come in and borrow the pole burner, but it's there for you. Anything of course, or if you've got ideas or you've got an extra tool lying around, you're not gonna use it, bring it in, we'll put it to good use.
Sad when your kids grow up, move away and
But what a great opportunity, I mentioned on Facebook, if there were two or three enterprises in Mon teams, they, they could start events for this downtown Mon stuff, it's as people just want that, so if anybody know any teams that need some extra money, I'll just show them the roads.
Well, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have anything other than the budget that we're talking about. Flight board reports.
I've got one note. This past week, the ICE is out on Enveste Lake and the Lake Association partnered with State of Maine Navigation Bureau to install somewhere between fifteen and twenty navigation booths for animals. So they worked with this guy named Tim who does state's navigation aid program, he designed with the association, all the appropriate markings for every part of Lake, every known hazard in Lake. And the way the program works is that half of the expense is paid for by the Lake Association and half of the expense is paid for by State of Maine, basically give us the supplies, give us the advice. And then the Lake Association made arrangements with a volunteer that is responsible for installing the navigational aids in the places where the state is telling us that it makes sense to do that, as well as removing them at the end of the season and storing them over the winter. So, many thanks to the State of Maine, Tim, and as well as the Enveste Lake Improvement Association for making all the arrangements there, you'll see a new setup that we run Enveste Lake this, this season.
So I assume there's some, some headway speed only type
Oh, yeah.
areas marked, it wasn't ever marked before.
Oh, yeah, like the mouth to the jug stream, for example, where
Or the, the narrows where you come on by the campground and it's
Yeah, 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 yeah. So, yeah, they did a pretty decent job of, of, of putting out well, actually, we've got one or two leftover booths, so if we've missed anything and someone lets us know.
Need one in turn. Go fast in front of you.
Whoever puts out the booths is liable, if something
Yeah, that was the historic line of argument. And when we discussed that with Tim from the State of Maine, he made a couple of observations. One was you're getting the State of Maine to group this design of all the, all the known hazards, so, and, and the method for marking them, so if there were any Uh, if there were any liabilities, then they would be much more likely to be talking to the State of Maine than it would be the Lake Association that has. You know, pennies. But secondly, um. I don't know. I don't know. The 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 reality of it is it has never been lost according to Tim's twenty year experience with with any of those margins. And then secondly, I think the Lake Association is investing in some sort of. Director's insurance policy, which might cost a couple hundred bucks a year just to make sure that if someone does do a nuisance liability, wants to that. There's a way to respond. Um, but it's a fairly, uh, low intensity and low likelihood of it would be mission.
Most of the time when people break things by boos, it's because they just, it says rock and they don't care and they, you know, run on pad on the rock.
Yeah, well, most most more more times than not Doug, when someone breaks their their motor on some hazard, they're pretty ashamed of the fact that it happened. So.
Or they've they've been imbibing in some adult beverages.
Uh, yeah, so we had, um. We had a meeting of budget from the R S U to, uh, school board, the budget committee of the school board. And, uh, they gave us a preview of, uh, what to expect in terms of next year's budget from their perspective. And of course, there are a couple of moving parts on that, uh, still, because they're still in negotiations with two out of the three unions that are. Uh, uh, whose contracts are up and being renewed. And there's also, uh, some uncertainty as to exactly what their health insurance. Uh, costs are going to be. They're still negotiating the health insurance company on that. And they have about a week to wrap all of that up before they'll be able to forward some. More certain numbers, um, to all the communities in Congress. What what we know, uh, so far is that, uh, when push comes to shove and they take into account. Um, increase in expenses, that is, the non-labor cost expenses, there's a three percent increase in expenses. Um, what we know that the labor costs could very well increase the overall, uh, budget to about a five point three percent. Increase in Monma's contribution to the R S U. Uh, there was a slight decrease in Monma's share of, uh, property valuation, uh, during the conversation. Other communities had larger increases in Monma's, uh, during, uh, during the last year according to state. And, uh, what was the dollar figure on that? I went through it was a two hundred eighty thousand dollar achievement. An increase of two hundred eighty thousand dollars per month is. Uh, my sense is that was sort of the worst case scenario and that based on. Uh, some health insurance figures that that number could come down a little bit.
Except for the, uh, cost of electricity that I mentioned, cost of the churn, uh, cost which, I mean, the cost of fuel. Or. Going.
Sure.
And so, uh, it was, well, three to two hundred ninety thousand, I can look at, uh, which is about twenty four thousand dollars more every month. So, uh, it'll be five hundred and twenty five thousand.
Yes.
And I did ask, uh, how much is that new school saving, uh, with all the all the modern features that it has, but, you know, the. That compared to the two old schools we were running and, uh, it should be huge.
So my advice, uh, to books and books upon and for cotton wagon pond is, uh, if you're interested in participating in navigation is. Call Tim. I can get you to contact me about it. You can see me right away. And, uh, it's a, it's, you know, the residence on, uh, on that desktop lake, which is. And slow costs too. I mean, I think the Lake Association. Might have spent a thousand bucks. They can stay to Maine, might have spent a thousand bucks and we're good for between five and ten years and the life of those boos. Um, so it's a pretty good deal. You get volunteers who are keeping track of them and, you know, adjusting them as needed. It's pretty good, pretty efficient deal.
I wanted to mention the, uh, we've got the demolition. Uh, there's a controversy about, uh. Saving part of the foundation on the, you're placing the building on the left side, where the south end of it. Of that old building. Uh. And, uh, did you, did you see that?
Yeah, but we haven't, we're having, going to have the, um. Construction manager approached that with them, but we haven't voted to have the construction manager approach that. Because from the meeting you had the choosing the construction and, uh, they were of the same mind we were that if we ever were going to. Decide to add on to the old academy, having a completed whole foundation makes sense. So we were going to let the construction manager have that discussion once they're there. So.
But you saw them, uh, the.
Well, I saw what they said, but I would rather have the construction manager talk to them about that because I'm sure the construction manager. That we're deciding on, uh, has done a lot of these historic restorations and a lot of tear downs and things and has a lot of information. That I think will be useful.
They can have the conversation. The 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 demolition guys, everybody knows the. The left side foundation in the rear is block. And he says that they've tried this over a dozen times, taken buildings down with block foundations. And as soon as they touch the top walls, it racks it enough that it tends to crack and then it's just not useful anymore. So he was just trying to make it clear that if they start doing it, there's a low probability that it will survive. You know, the top of the building coming off basically is what he was saying. So that's kind of where we are in the discussion between the committee and the construction manager and all that.
Yeah.
Of course, I'm of the opinion from what was in last year's warrant about, uh, how much work was supposed to be done. That, uh. I don't believe that the voters, the taxpayers want us, want that committee. To, uh, spend any more money than necessary by trying to. I don't know, save something or, uh. That probably it will be able to be saved. Uh, and I guess so. Money involved. We don't have that much. That one point five million is not enough money. We can't play around.
And I think that everybody realizes that. And we've had that discussion. We had it with the construction manager candidates the other night about the finite amount of money we have. No matter where it comes from and getting the biggest bang for our buck. But that being said, if it's possible. To save that side. And we can save that side to eventually put an addition on with another full. You know, Warren article, then why would you tear it down? It's like, well, I don't want a garage right now, but. I might want a garage in ten years, so I'm just gonna tear my garage down, you know, so that kind of thing. So I think that everybody's well aware of the fact that we only have a certain amount of money. And the most important part is saving the old eighteen fifty six portion of the school. And that's what our plan is. But if it's possible to keep that and not. You know, put good money after bad, then then that's the direction the construction manager candidate and the, uh, um. Demo company can have. And if it works, great. If it's not gonna work, then we'll spend money that we shouldn't be spending on it. But we all know that we have this much money to spend. And the most important part is saving the existing.
Well, other than not, you can't go spend any more for any kind of like fiddling around with what's the old building that voters voted to. Reserve, uh, just just me. Uh, the other thing I, uh, it was a thing that went around this afternoon on, uh. Wanted, I guess, apparently. Twenty five hundred dollars. You set aside.
Yep, they did ask for that.
And that failing, uh, couldn't do, uh, I guess, held a lot of stock. That wasn't in the warrant.
It wasn't in here because when we went through the budget last time, there was some comments made that they should just use the money that they already have. So I deleted it on the assumption that that was the direction you were going. If you're not, that's fine. We can add it back in. But that's why. It was originally in the budget and I took it out after I heard those comments. So that's why it's not on the warrant.
Right, we came to a consensus that it wasn't necessary to spend that this year. So we came down.
Okay, so or or was it, refresh my memory, this twenty, and and so that everyone understands listening, the twenty five hundred dollars that the commission is asking for is for what?
The walkways.
So upgrading the one.
They want to make them wider so they're more, you know, closer to, so they're more accessible for more people that need poles and things like that.
But they have money.
There is money in the in the Whittier. Yeah, there is money in there. So I was under the impression that you were. You were sort of saying, why don't they use the money they already have and not, and not appropriate more.
And so, uh, is it more than enough money in the Whittier Woods?
There's enough for the twenty five. Yeah, certainly for them. Yeah.
Considering how much we got in the woods.
And and that does, does that, that's available to them now? Does that require, uh, an authorization from the voters in order?
They have to come to you for that because it's like a reserve. As long as you authorize it, they can spend it.
I I wonder why, uh, they're saying, well, Joel in this case is saying, uh. We're gonna come forward again next year.
I didn't, I didn't see that part.
Well, if if their reserve gets depleted and they have a project that they need help with, then they certainly can come ask at that time. For funds to to, you know, whatever project they have that they don't have money for. And at that point, we could discuss if there's any more harvesting that should be done. Could be done to re-inflate that reserve account. And if there isn't, then I think at that time we'd, we'd look at what we could, uh. Think was a fair ask.
See, so right now Doug, it's it's not a true reserve. It's a carry forward account. So you carry it forward. So for them to, so for them to appropriate it. Out of that right now, they have to go to the town meeting. But on this, on on the warrant, there's an article to create a true reserve, which will then move. All of that money into a reserve account, which then leads it to your discretion to spend it. You don't have to go to the voters to spend the money out of out of a true reserve account. So they will be able to get it out now without a without a specific appropriation on them.
But that wasn't, when why they wanted. Do the, this, the thing that they're talking about in the details.
Because they're not understanding the concept of having a true reserve account. They're they're thinking they have to get an appropriation for that amount of money to spend it. And they won't provided the reserve account gets approved.
I mean, it's very important to emphasize that assuming the reserve account is approved, then they'll have that funding available to do what they want to do.
That is correct. And the other one that that they mentioned that's not on here, it was about them changing the way the farm support program would get approved. They wanted to have the select board approve it. That's not permitted under state law and they didn't understand the difference was in Winslow. Winslow has a town council, so their council gets to approve those. Here, you you're not a council, so they have to go to the voters. So that that was the. So I didn't put that one on there either because they they just can't do it. That's right.
They understand that.
Yes, I sent them an email this afternoon explaining that. Yes. So I think everybody's okay.
Next, uh, any other, yeah, oh, public comment? Mr. Shaw?
Yes, hi. Dave Shaw. I just have two little things. Uh, Dan, one for Dan. Uh, how are we doing with the street keepers? Are we operating from using this year? Can we get it? Is it working? Uh, was this, at least that it's on it?
Yes, all the way above.
Good.
I would, I would pick that Monday morning and I'll have it for the week and then we go back to winter and then we'll be slopping on and off until. Both of us have our towns swept clean.
Good, thank you. Um, how is the demolition going? I know we talked about it, but how is it going? Are we on schedule? Is there any overruns or are we looking at anything right now that that is gonna impair that?
It shouldn't. They signed a contract for that amount. So as far as I know, the only snafu we've had is. The water. So that's the only snafu we've had. And and, um, as long as we approve who we're recommending for the construction manager, then we'll have. Some more eyes on the project on a daily basis. Um.
I'd just like to throw in with Doug that I'm not in favor of keeping a foundation off a building that that's already fifty years old. It's not going to last. Underground more than any amount of time exposed to the weather, especially if you've been a backfiller. Uh, only because the difference in tension between the two on next winter, it's just gonna collapse.
Well, that was a discussion that the construction manager was going to, well, the construction manager. That we, um, spoke with both about that and, um. The one that if we approve, um. Already has designs on doing an evaluation and making a form for that. So, but that's what they do day in, day out. And I am not an engineer. As I always say, I'm just a devil. Hi Dennis. So what do I know about the engineering? So the engineers make those decisions. So, um. Well, yes, I mean, once they make a decision on and and sit down and or go through it and talk with the, um, the, uh, demolition company. Um, yeah, we have another meeting on April. Um. Twenty six. So I think that we will have a lot more information going forward from there because they'll have boots on the ground by then. So.
Thank you.
Yep.
Well, any other, anybody on there?
Other comments?
There's no hand. There are people, but there's no hands.
No, I I'm back here. I didn't see you at any of them. I mentioned the last meeting that we even come here. And I'm wondering why you can't take money out of the rainy day fund and put it into the fifty dirt roads.
The board doesn't have the authority to appropriate money. So if it's not in the budget, it can't be done. So the only monies that are available is what is currently available in the public works budget. And and I believe most of the road money that you have is already accounted for, right, for this, for the spring. It's to finish paving that was done last year, correct?
No, no, I don't think we did. What we did say was that we were gonna plan in the warrant that's before us to approve today. Uh, uh, an amount of money somewhere in the neighborhood of two hundred fifty thousand dollars. That could be allocated out of the reserve fund that we're asking the voters to approve to rebuild the parts that are really bad on the Presty Road, which is what. Pete is gonna be working with Dan on identifying and then how to fix it and how much it will cost. So we we didn't tell you that we we could do it before the. Warrant went out. I don't remember eighteen thousand. All I remember is that.
No, the, no, the eighteen thousand is the extra amount in the American Recovery Act fund, which we don't have yet. That that also has to be approved. Yeah, that also has to be approved through the warrant.
That's in the warrant. Those, all of that has to be approved by the voters. So nothing can be spent until the voters approve the warrant.
Nothing about us being here about Presto Rose from last time is not even in from last meeting. It's in here.
In the minutes? In the minutes?
Libby doesn't usually write down all of the public comments in there because they're not actionable items. She basically writes in the minutes the things that the board takes action on. It depends what the item is. So it's just generally stated that if you. You could state your name because the public sometimes does comment on items that they take action on that Libby will actually write down. Those things, but public comments, you don't really, you don't typically take verbatim notes of everybody's comments in a meeting. You only write down what the actionable items are. So since that wasn't an an agenda item, she just kind of crosses over.
And there was no motion connected with.
That's correct. That's correct.
So if I recall from our our last meeting. We did. I don't know that it was a motion, but we did uh uh. Recommend town manager that when we receive the remaining ARPA funds, and I know that's not until July. That there was uh eighteen thousand dollars left of unallocated funds. Uh and I think it was Harold suggested that eighteen thousand dollars.
Right.
Be used uh with the public works department, the purpose of uh working on. Their road maintenance like the Cressy Road.
Well, it's it's in the it's in the warrant that we're going to go over in a few minutes. It's actually listed in the ARPA fund list of monies to be spent. So. It's everything that we said we wanted to do last week is in the warrant. If the warrant gets approved, then that's what we plan to do.
That's in like uh there's two other items before we discuss that, but just just so you know.
And tell me if I'm out of turn here, Mr. Chair, but maybe we can just hold the comments on uh Cressy Road and do the warrant article items. Exactly what our plans are if the voters approve.
I I had a question for on the woods. There's a a machine, it's not a street sweeper, but it's not a machine that sweeps. Uh it's also used as a lawnmower and snowball and all that stuff. Is that is that? Working?
As of today, it's functioning. That's that's the machine that I also use to snowball the sidewalks. Uh it has a lawnmower attachment. It's used to mow in the summer and it has a uh. Roof attachment that I use to sweep sidewalks and parking lots. Uh and then use the larger street sweeper from Winter that we share to pick up those windrows.
You you just edged with it.
Yes, I I edge. And. Sounds sarcastic, but it's true. As of today, it is working in function.
We're going to have a discussion about that on one of the warrant articles because we may pivot on one of them for this exact piece of equipment. So just so.
I'm judging from your tone of voice that the reliability of said equipment is something less than unbearable.
Yes, we we the machine and I do not see eye to eye.
So um no other. Oh, next is to consider an event application for the Monmouth Museum Student Fellowship Summer Program.
So you received a memo from Reagan in there. I trust you all. So you you all see that. So. And then the application was attached. I don't have much more to add to that. If you have any questions, I can try to answer.
Move we approve, move we approve.
Move we approve.
The application.
I'll second that.
This motion by Harold, second by Chris to approve the uh motion to uh. Approve the. Event application for the Monmouth Museum Student Fellowship Summer Program. Thank you. Uh next is to consider the recommendation. Of the building committee to hire Nickerson and O'Day as project uh construction manager. And authorize town manager to negotiate and execute a contract.
So they they have supplied me with their boilerplate uh. Contract, which I have passed on to our attorney. Once I get it back, I will sign it if you so desire me to do so. Chris probably has more to add with this than.
I think they were a great fit. They have a ton of experience with historic restoration, so um. They are an employee owned company now. Uh the man that sold it to the employees is still actively involved. In a huge history book and um. Very excited to participate and manage that project and um. They also apply for um certificates from the historic restoration. I forget. You know, the actual name of it, but pretty much every historic project they work on, they receive certificates honoring them for their work. And they always apply for them and he said definitely will do it for this project. It's you know, just a there. They take a lot of pride in that and uh the um um. Man that does all of the estimating, he's the real deal and that's really where it all lies right now is the estimating. So we we get somebody that knows what they're doing with that um. And and we talked a lot about estimating and. What happens with their subs and how they handle their subs and you really think that. They're they're the the right fit for us and um. We were pretty happy with both of our applicants or or the people that returned the RFPs, but we felt felt really felt that Nickerson and O'Day. The ones to go with, so that was our recommendation.
I make a motion that we authorize the town manager to negotiate and execute the contract, uh to hire Nickerson and O'Day as project construction manager.
Second.
So it's a motion by Kent, second by Harold who uh authorized. Uh the town manager to sign the contract, negotiate and execute a contract uh with Nickerson and O'Day. And O'Day as the project construction manager. Uh who was in favor? Thank you. Next is a public hearing on the town warrant for twenty twenty two.
How would you like to proceed with this?
What we've done in the past and of course it's it's only the way we've done it in the past is that the town manager would read each article and then we'd ask for a public. If there are any questions.
Sure. I want to do the moderator one.
No, there's there's the standard.
Okay. Shall the town vote to appropriate ten thousand dollars from the unassigned fund balance to fund the senior citizen property tax assistance program, which provides refunds. Up to five hundred dollars to those who are sixty five years of age and have been a resident of town for ten years. Yeah, okay. Just keep going.
Yep.
Shall the town raise and appropriate one million one hundred eighty four thousand eight hundred and eighty two dollars from the general taxation for general administration? This includes the town office staff, the assessing department, elected officials, employee benefits, general assistants. Um our insurances, um boards and committees, code enforcement. And uh maintenance of the town's buildings. Um shall the town raise and appropriate seventy one thousand nine hundred two dollars from general taxation for public utilities accounts? This is streetlights and fire hydrant rental fees. Um shall the town appropriate two hundred dollars from the Comston Prize Fund and raise and appropriate from general taxation, the sum of twenty six thousand five hundred and thirty five dollars? For a total of twenty six thousand seven hundred and thirty five dollars for the below listed special projects. I'll read these off just so people know what they are. Cemetery care, twelve thousand dollars, Comston Prize, two hundred, KB cap transportation, six hundred and fifty dollars. Family violence, thousand dollars, Memorial Day services, seven hundred. Senior Spectrum, two thousand four hundred and seventy two, hundred and fifty dollars to the food bank. RCAM, fifty five hundred dollars, American Red Cross, five hundred, Crisis and Counseling Center, one thousand four hundred and thirty seven. Tri-County Mental Health, two hundred and fifty, Main Public Broadcasting, a hundred dollars, Main General Hospice, five hundred, Kennebec Behavioral Health, two hundred and fifty. And Lifelight, one thousand twenty six dollars.
Ten thousand or twelve thousand?
It was the request was twelve.
Okay, good.
Yes, I the version that I have up here, we had a a few changes from when I had to post it there and some of them were just. Once we had the staff in the office kind of review it two or three times, you can check the math and you're like, oh, I I changed the top number, but not the one down below. So that's that's where that was. So the total amount, Dave, is still the same. The amount that we originally wrote at the top for the articles is the same. It just didn't add up. Yeah, yeah. Article seven, shall the town raise and appropriate from general taxation, seventy one thousand five hundred dollars for the capital improvement program for the following accounts? The Monmouth Dam assessments, ten thousand dollars. I have a quote from the thing and that's that's almost a spot on number. So we're good there. Streetlight, this is to purchase streetlights, fifty eight thousand dollars and a generator reserve for a fire department, four thousand two hundred and eighty five dollars. Um shall the town raise and appropriate seventy four thousand dollars from general taxation for ambulance rescue services? Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of four hundred and seven thousand one hundred and nine dollars and fifteen cents from general taxation for law enforcement, police protection? This includes the police department and animal control. Shall the town raise and appropriate a hundred and fifty one thousand nine hundred and ninety two from general taxation for fire protection? Shall the town raise and appropriate sixty eight thousand seven hundred and seventy three dollars from general taxation for public safety dispatching services? Shall the town raise and appropriate ninety three thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars from general taxation for Comston Hall operating expenses? Shall uh shall the town raise and appropriate eighty four thousand five dollars and ninety five cents from the from general taxation for the Comston Public Library? Shall the town raise and appropriate a hundred and sixteen thousand four hundred and two from general taxation for parks and recreation programs? That there is some increases in there, but that's because they're that budget's taking ownership of one seventeen Academy Road, so the utilities and things are in there for that. Shall the town raise and appropriate nine hundred and seventy eight thousand seven hundred and eighty two dollars and seven cents from general taxation? For public works accounts, uh six hundred and forty one thousand one hundred and ninety nine dollars and nineteen cents for the highway. And three hundred and thirty seven thousand five hundred and eighty two dollars and eighty eight cents for the transfer station.
Justin, is this uh where we are seeing some additional budgeted uh expenses? For uh road maintenance?
No, that'll come up later. Yep. Um shall the town raise and appropriate four hundred and forty five thousand four hundred and sixteen dollars and twelve cents from general taxation? And sixty thousand from excess bond proceeds in the PAC Philman Bond for debt retirement and debt service. So what we have is we have excess money from the bond that we didn't use. So I'm suggesting we appropriate it. Back to basically reduce what we have to raise. We can't use it for anything else, but we can use it to pay itself, sort of. So that's what that sixty thousand is. Okay. Article eighteen, to see if the town will authorize the select board. This is a new article for you, so I'll I'm happy to explain it when you get there. That to to see if the town will authorize a select board upon a majority vote of the select board to exceed by no more than ten percent annually, the amount authorized for each account approved. In Article four through Article seventeen above, so long as the overall amount spent for the sum total of those articles does not exceed the total appropriation approved. For those articles. So what that allows you to do is if we had one account that was going to overspend. It authorizes you to move up to ten percent from other article approvals. So like if the public works was going to go over, we could take a little from. Uh the police department up to that ten percent amount. So it just provides a little flexibility if something happens that we that was unforeseen. Okay, um. This is where we're going to this is this is paving here. So Article nineteen, shall the town create a road maintenance reserve fund for the purpose of making repairs to and paving town roads? And appropriate six hundred thousand dollars from the unassigned fund balance to the same. And this proposal will have no impact on the tax rate because it's coming out of the unassigned fund balance. So this would create a true reserve. So the money would sit there if it was if if first if you decided next year that you didn't want to pave roads because petroleum's still too high or whatever, it would just sit there. And you wouldn't have to go back to the voters to reappropriate it. You could just it would just carry forward in the next year and the only um. The difference with having it in a reserve fund like this opposed to putting it in the public works operating budget is we have to come to you to spend money out of it. So any proposal would probably come to you anyway for a paving contract. So the effect is none, but it's just not. In his operating budget. He can't just spend it as he sees fit. He has to come and get get approval from you.
And and so if the board uh if if the voters approve this article number nineteen and uh that would. Set aside six hundred thousand dollars and do a reserve fund for the purpose of making repairs and paving. So uh if the board uh thought it was wise to make repairs to the Cressy Road. The road bed, for example, uh upgrading the road bed. These funds would then be available for the for for the board to to authorize them to do that.
That is correct.
So that's. That's uh that's how that's going to work. Of course, we're going to be relying on the road commissioner to make recommendations to us as to how that. Additional funding will be allocated, whether it's paving, whether it's this road, that road or another road. But this is uh because it's coming from the uh unassigned fund balance. It's essentially one time money. And that would be available for additional improvements throughout the.
And we did we did. I I did ask Pete if he thought that the uh the the critical areas could be repaired. For somewhere in the neighborhood of under a quarter of a million dollars and without seeing it, he thought that might be possible. So I think we had a consensus that we we committed to make the road uh in in passable shape. We just need to see what, you know, he says and 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 the design and then the cost and see how much we can do.
And certainly. I would expect that the rate of inflation on gravel and road building material is going to be somewhat less than that. Asphalt and wheel based products.
I wouldn't assume anything.
Pete Pete did say that our last meeting that he thought that uh. Public Works could do a a majority of the type of work that he thought would be uh necessary. So. That's that's going to be up to to Dan to work with him and then decide what what his crew is capable of doing, what they have time to do and then what should be. Contracted out if anything and materials, I think, would have to be con. Some of them would, you definitely have to buy some materials. The fiber would have to be purchased and uh. And depending on what type of gravel has to be used and whether we have it in our pit available or not, I assume that it's going to have to be. Uh sifted to remove fine, so. We don't have that capability at this point. So there's a there's a lot that'll go into actually determining how much can be done.
Article twenty one, to see if the town will vote to appropriate two hundred and forty three thousand five hundred and forty six. From coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds, also known as American Rescue Plan or ARPA funds, received by the town for the federal government. For the following purposes, purchase equipment for the police department, upgrade software and digitize tax maps in the assessing department, purchase a storage shed for the recreation department. Purchase and replace the condenser units from Comston Hall, purchase a transfer pump for the fire department tanker truck, make general repairs and improvements to the town hall and contribute to the road maintenance reserve fund.
So.
Did my numbers? Yeah, my numbers. See, this is why you you can you can go through this fifteen times.
Exactly.
But that's why you so Larry, thank you for that.
We just have to remember because I'm like.
It's a secret one.
It's written in invisible ink.
And so uh correct me if I'm wrong, Justin, the last phrase of Article twenty one, now known as Article twenty.
Yes.
Uh the last phrase there, Ms. Woodman, is uh uh the portion that Harold. Had uh mentioned to you last time around where the eighteen thousand dollars or so of. had, uh, mentioned to you last time around, where the eighteen thousand dollars or so, uh, uh, leftover funding from the American Rescue Plan would be dedicated to the road maintenance reserve fund. So that's on top of, like, the six hundred thousand dollars in Article number nineteen, two hundred and fifty of which we think is, uh, is looking like it would be dedicated for, uh, Cressy Road, uh, repair in next fiscal year and soon. Is a good reason for everyone to vote.
My, my intention with broaching that number was that, um, that we could possibly go that high. It may not cost that much money to do whatever needs to be done. Um, but I think it's reasonable since the road is, was almost impassable in a couple of spots this spring, that we need to do whatever's necessary to bring those up to to a, a reasonable condition. Um, just on, again, my opinion that, you know, we wouldn't want to necessarily go over that quarter million number, but if we can go under the quarter million dollars and do the right job, then we have more money to spend in paving other things that have a critical need to. So my intention for speaking for me only is that the road becomes, um, in, in passable condition all the time. You're not rutted, not muddy, you know?
Well, since there is no, can we make a twenty while we're sitting here?
Yeah. You can get a pen?
To provide ice cream after every.
Meeting?
Meeting.
We used to do that.
Um, shall the town vote to authorize the select board to enter into a three-year lease purchase, lease agreement for the purchase of a police cruiser for the police department and appropriate from general taxation, fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars for the first annual payment? Okay, so this is the one where Dan will, will have our conversation here. So shall the town vote to authorize the select board to enter into a four-year lease agreement with the per- for the purchase of a one-ton plow dump truck for the public works department and appropriate from general taxation, thirty-three thousand dollars for the first annual payment? Now, after discussing, we don't even know if we could get a truck in the next year and, um, we have a, we have a serious problem getting the sidewalks plowed because that piece of equipment that he was talking about earlier, that just doesn't seem to be up to the task. So I think the thought was is that maybe he could get a, a used truck and a used sidewalk plow for approximately that same same amount of money, and he may be able to find those two things opposed to maybe waiting a year or more, uh, to get a truck that we don't even know if we'd be able to get. And then he still has the sidewalk plow issue. So I'll let you speak to your good thoughts on that, Dan.
Obviously, buying used equipment comes with its, um, potential pitfalls, um, and most towns will not buy used equipment. Um, but I think the shortage of supplies and vehicles across the country and the world is, is going to have us devaluable. I think to make the most use of appropriation for capital things, projects, uh, or outlet, that we definitely need to consider looking at a used chassis, uh, and the type of sidewalk machine that we really need to handle the sidewalk pad and what we're building. Uh, those machines are as much as that plow truck, if not more. So in looking at used market, there, there's a fairly decent market out there now for this equipment. Um, obviously, we definitely are due diligence in, in a pre-buy inspection, but I think it's a way to put us in a position where we know we'll have equipment that will get the job done through this next few years of uncertainty. What really drove me towards this was, uh, in speaking to, uh, Ford Motor Company and just putting an inquiry out on a new chassis and the answer from them was that Ford shut down, they're not making any twenty-twenty-two trucks in the chassis designations. There's not. So we won't have them as an option. Obviously, I've looked for GM and Chevy and Dodge, the pickings are very slim for chassis, if any. Um, I did get a call from International. They could potentially build me a chassis in October if there was approval. But as with everything we're seeing lately, I see that being pushed back as the I'm already almost a year out on the International stop truck. So we're in last year. So I don't see a new chassis i- i- in the future that's going to get us through this next one. Uh, so I think going news route, potentially combining this to, to purchase two pieces of equipment that public works desperately needs, um, is a, is a way to get us through and get us back on track.
Are you planning to rewrite this?
So, uh, so what we basically do is I would change this to say, to purchase a used one-ton plow truck and a, and a, a sidewalk plow, basically. And the amounts, um, I'm pretty sure I can't lease a, a used equipment, so it, it would be more of like a bond for that amount. So I'd have to borrow it or loan. So this would turn into basically one of those articles with the financial statement at the bottom that I, I would put on, you know, that shows the total bonded indebtedness and all that, that kind of stuff. That's what it would look like. We don't have any of those on here this year, but if you've seen those in the past, it would be more of a question like that. And so, so we're not. Basically a hundred and twenty thousand dollars is what it is.
So we're not going to be able to approve this tonight?
You can, if you're okay with what I did.
I'm not.
Oh, okay, okay.
I'm not. They may be, but I'm not.
Okay.
So it would be, the, the, rather than, uh, the, what you're, what I'm hearing you suggest is rather than the first payment of a four-year lease agreement for thirty-three thousand dollars, it would be a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Nope, because I would borrow it probably over, over the same period. It just wouldn't be a lease. And because of the way that bonding works, it would really be more like a thousand, probably be less than two thousand dollars next year because it would be an interest-only payment next spring. So it would basically hit the budget on, on your next budget is when the bulk of it would.
I, I'm not saying I'm against the action. I'm just saying I'm not willing to vote to approve it without actually seeing it in writing.
Okay, that's fair enough. Yep.
And you would have to prove it, right?
You will have to do something this week for us to make the timeline. So what we could do is if you wanted to in concept, I could draft the thing and you all could come in and sign it tomorrow or something in the town office if you wanted to read the language first, if you, if you're more comfortable with that.
So we could, we could vote, we could vote tonight when we, we vote on this to conditionally approve that question, uh, pending the seeing the language of the question. And then we could sign it, like you said, tomorrow.
Yeah, then you could decide if you were uncomfortable with it, you could just not sign it. And, and still, if a majority of you signed it, it would go. And if you didn't, then it wouldn't. We just, we'd have to regroup after that. Yes.
No, no, I, I was going to ask you, economist, economy major. What do you want to do?
Well, the question I would have is what's the interest rate of the bond, uh, if we, if we bonded, if we borrow money? What's the interest rate and how does that compare with the term rate of, uh, of these?
It's very low right now with the bond bank. It, it probably would be sub-two percent, to be honest. Probably like one point eight or one point seven. The money is very cheap through them right now.
And do we have an idea of how that compares with the four-year lease agreement for thirty thousand dollars?
Those are about three percent.
Yeah, they're, you're, you're right. They're right around three percent. It might be three. Yep.
Maybe a little bit better, but.
Right, right.
Okay, and are, and we're not out of whack in terms of what our auditors and financial advisors are telling us that our debt load is too high.
No.
But it wouldn't impact the town's credit.
I wouldn't. This is, this is a pretty small amount of money, too.
The, the net effect actually for this budget cycle, if I'm understanding it correctly, would be that we'd, we'd save about thirty thousand dollars in this year's appropriation by taking this action, which again, I'm not opposing the action. I just am opposed to voting on something that I haven't seen the language of it yet.
Yeah, that's fair. We just kind of talked about this today, I think, or yesterday. I can't remember what it was and it was just.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Realizing what was going on the war and thoughts of researching and trying to come up with a plan that's going to going to work for everybody that's, um, the most positive.
So, so, uh, to answer your question, Doug, uh, assuming we're all happy with the language when we finally get to see it, it seems to me like it might be slightly better deal than what was originally proposed in Article twenty-three.
Right.
Quite a similar payment schedule. So, so you'll see that first year, it's only, it's only like a thousand dollars.
It's pretty standard.
Yeah.
That's right, Article twenty-two.
Just.
Newly invented Article twenty-two.
Uh, the next one, shall the town authorize the select board to negotiate and execute a multi-year contract with a solar company to either install a solar farm at the transfer station and to contract with said solar company to purchase the electricity for use in town facilities or contract with a community solar farm for a multi-year deal to purchase solar energy for use in town facilities, whatever is in the best interest of the town? So this just kind of leaves it open to us either building one or just joining one of those community solar farms, whatever is, turns out to be the best deal when we do another RFP. Shall the town create a Whittier Woods Reserve Fund using the proceeds from previous and future wood harvesting activities in the, in Whittier Woods for the purposes of making improvements to trails or conservation projects in Whittier Woods? So we, this is what we talked about earlier.
And do we have a sense of what the balance is?
I don't have a very, um, good grasp on it right now because of the carryforwards. You kind of have to like look back and I'm not sure if they've all been done for this year. So I can't, I can't speak intelligently about, about that.
If you can find out.
Yeah. Shall the town appropriate monies from Snowville registration fees reimbursed to the town by the treasurer of state domain, six dollars per registration for the purpose of grooming and maintaining Snowville Trail solely within the municipal limits of the town of Monmouth? Shall the town authorize the select board to receive taxes from the tax, from tax club members after the payment due date without interest? Shall the town authorize the select board to appropriate an estimated amount of seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from municipal revenue sharing and one million, one hundred and ninety-six thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars of fiscal year twenty-three non-property tax revenue, which includes two hundred thousand dollars of unassigned fund balance to reduce the tax. So they're all the revenues and, uh, unaside fund balance transfer.
Justin, in the end, Dan, if we are using the unassigned fund balance of two hundred thousand dollars for twenty-eight and we're using the unassigned fund balance, six hundred thousand dollars for article nineteen, would you give us a sense of where we would stand with our unassigned, unas- unassigned fund balance? Say that again, if that's that. You, uh, going into next fiscal year, like what, what, uh, percent?
Yeah, well, just remember that we're leaning on the FY twenty audit because we haven't had one done for this year. So we're looking two years back. So if I went with this, it'd be about twelve percent. Stayed a little on the conservative side to make sure, because I, I just don't have the newest audit and we'll be two years out by the time we start taking this money out. So that's kind of where we'd be. We'd be at twelve based on that twenty-twenty audit.
And, uh, do you anticipate that twelve percent would be a reasonable balance to have on hand so that town doesn't have to take out, uh, revenue anticipation notes in order to cash flow and pay bill?
Yes, we should be fine. Yep.
And just so that folks who are listening know, uh, what's going on, if I, if I name. The town got some advice from our auditor at the last audit after the twenty-twenty fiscal year, um, that, uh, our unsun, our, our rainy day fund, which is this unassigned fund balance, was a bit more than they were used to seeing from municipality beside the fund. And they encouraged us to think about, uh, uh, spending that down a bit. Um, since then, um, we've also seen, we never once seen this, uh, quite a lot of inflation. Uh, and the reality of having a large, uh, surplus account with cash sitting in during an eight percent inflationary environment is it loses eight percent a year. Uh, and so, uh, what, what these two articles, Article twenty-six and Article nineteen do is spend down the unassigned fund balance to a level that, uh, our auditors are encouraging us is reasonable. Um, just so that the, the town can pay bills without having to borrow money, uh, that's cash flow. Uh, and without losing eight percent a year on a rainy day fund that is sitting in an account, uh, is money. And so that's why you're seeing, um, some of these, uh, expenses not paid for by a tax increase, but instead paid for by this unassigned fund balance. Uh, and it is one-time money, absolutely one-time money. And so we should be cautious about that going into next fiscal year. Uh, but what it will mean, uh, I think this was Harold's suggestion, was that, uh, uh, any of the increases this year won't be getting the taxpayer, um, at least on the municipal side. Correct? The school, the school is a different story. Uh, but on municipal expenses, taxpayers will be insulated from the increases in the budget. Uh, and we'll have some additional investment in road maintenance to get us caught up on some of the deferred maintenance that we've seen over the past couple of years. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's our general plan.
Good. Justin, for some reason, uh, Kurt Love, he, every year, I mean, our, our unassigned fund balance wasn't as large as it is now, but every year you would take out a tax anticipation note and never, you know, you'd have a stack of papers to sign.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and, and we never use it. So I don't know.
Well, it wasn't every year. We, we had to do that a few years and it was, it, as I recall, it was back around the time of the RSU coming into being. And so we, we had to pay some expenses prior to the, the, uh, the tax money coming in. And so we had to take that loan to, to do that. And then once we started receiving taxes in the fall, we were able to pay that back.
And, and if we, if, right, right, it, 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 if there is some, you know, uh, emergency or crisis or miscalculation by our auditors or what have you, we will always have that opportunity to, to tap into, uh, a, a revenue, uh, anticipation note, right? Um, and, and those interest rates right now are somewhere in the neighborhood of two percent and three percent.
Everything's pretty.
Something like that.
Right. I think it's important just to note for anybody that's listening that, that undesignedated fund balance doesn't, um, doesn't insulate us from catastrophe. What it does do is it provides us, uh, the ability to meet, um, immediate, un, unplanned challenges um, with, with a reasonable security, anticipation security. If some calamity were to befall, uh, the general populace and we didn't get any tax revenue in October, or just got a, a, a very small portion of what we normally expect to come in, then we'd have the availability to get that, that, uh, anticipation note to cover our expenses while we were recouping that. So it's, it's, uh, I guess it's not a, uh, it's not like an insurance policy. The insurance policy is what Kent's talking about, the tax anticipation note. The rate of the, uh, the, uh, undesignedated fund balance was actually, it's, it's two things. I mean, it's, it's part of it you can't spend anyway unless it's, um, if it's, uh, if public works underspent their budget by twenty thousand dollars for five years, then that'd be a hundred thousand dollars in that fund balance that could only be spent for public works. So it's, it's not like there's a big pot of money out there. You can, you can appropriate it for anything. Is that accurate, Justin? Is that fair statement?
Yeah, if it's a reserve fund. So the biggest benefit to having a healthy fund balance is, is that when you're in between those tax. Yeah, if it's a reserve fund, so the biggest benefit to having a healthy fund balance is that when you're in between those tax periods. Payroll keeps going out, so there there isn't the revenue coming in, so our checking account would be like anybody else in between payday, it kind of goes down like that, so the checking account gets. Low, so if you have a healthy fund balance, then you can keep making those payments without having to borrow that money until the money starts coming back in. Tax anticipation, no. Those are usually used either very early in the year because you haven't started getting your tax payments, or you use them at the very end of the year when you're starting to run out of money after. So that's kind of when you would use those typically. We were just doing revenues, right? Okay, so that shall the town vote to require one half of the taxes for the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three fiscal year? Due and payable on October thirteen, twenty twenty two, and one half of the taxes for the twenty two, twenty three fiscal year due April thirteen, twenty twenty three. And to see if the town will vote to require the rate per annum of interest set by the treasurer of the state of Maine, four percent. Be charged on October fourteen, twenty twenty two, and April fourteen, twenty twenty three, on all unpaid taxes. In addition, shall the select board be authorized to postpone the due dates of taxes and waive interest when the governor declares a state of emergency? Shall the town authorize a select board to sell and dispose of any real estate acquired by the town for non-payment taxes thereon on such terms as a select board deemed advisable and execute a quick claim deed? For such property and sales shall be conducted by sealed bid after public notice, including the community advertiser, except for repurchase by original owner. Or taxpayer of said property, except the select board shall use the special sale process required by thirty six MRSA. Section nine forty three C for qualifying homestead property if it chooses to sell it to anyone other than the former owner. Shall the town authorize a select board to make municipal expenditures based on the latest approved municipal budget if the proposed budget in whole or part. Fails to pass until a proposed municipal budget in whole or in part is approved. Shall the town vote to authorize the select board to accept? And expand or utilize for its intended purpose on behalf of the town any grants or funds awarded or paid to the town by any state or federal agency grant or other monetary donation from any other public. Or private entity, organization, or individual in any gift or personal property, this includes the authority to apply for such grants, funds, or donations where an application is required. Or take any other action thereon. Shall the town vote to authorize the select board to dispose of surplus equipment and property through sale or donation of said items? Shall the town vote to appropriate tax increment financing revenues to the development program fund for tax increment financing district and authorize a select board to expend funds from the development program? Fund to be used for purposes based on the district's development program statutory requirements. You're looking to make a motion, you just say moved as amended, which would include the changes in the numbering, which is incorrect in that other article. I think those were the only. Changes, and make sure I didn't write anything else down. Yes, sort of changed the borrowing article and to re- and to fix the numbering.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve the town warrant article items. As amended. Shall we, you you wanna?
Just like to to add pending the rewrite of article twenty.
Pending the rewrite of article twenty and the renumber. At twenty twenty two, it's currently numbered twenty two, and the renumbering will be.
Second. So just a reminder, we all need to.
Come in tomorrow, if you could, please.
Sign the warrants. So be available by.
I'll I'll do it first thing in the morning, so you could probably come in, it won't take me very long, so if you came in at any time after ten, it would be one of them. I'll leave it right out front, so they'll have it there. You ready for me? Almighty Waste School Demolition, this is phase one of four, one hundred and eleven thousand eight hundred and forty five dollars, Bernstein Shore. Town's attorney, one thousand forty one dollars, Blue Rock Earthwork Solid Waste Trips, six thousand three hundred and sixty one. Central Main Power, two thousand nine hundred and eighty one. Chem Search Hydraulic Fluid, one thousand forty two dollars. Dennis K. Burke Diesel Fuel, six thousand two hundred and seven dollars, Fielding's Oil and Propane Heating Fuel, one thousand three hundred and ninety dollars. Kennick Valley Humane Society, this is our payment for the ACO, place to put the animals, one thousand eight hundred and thirty five dollars. La Rochelle Consulting Economic Development, one thousand eight hundred dollars, Main Municipal Association Workers Compensation Insurance, sixteen thousand. Six hundred and thirty six dollars. Main Waste to Energy Recycling, two thousand five hundred and thirty dollars. Monmouth Sanitary District Sewer Service, one thousand five hundred and ninety five, New England Salt Company, one thousand seven hundred and seventy eight dollars. New England Vehicle Outfitters, twenty twenty one Charger Equipment Police Department, five thousand nine hundred and sixty. PDQ Door Transfer Station Steel Doors, eleven thousand six hundred and ninety dollars. All Designs Project is the architect for the Academy Building, two thousand nine hundred and fifty nine dollars, Regional School Unit Number Two. Four hundred and forty nine thousand two hundred and twenty five dollars, Treasurer State Domain Motor Vehicles, three thousand nine hundred and seventy nine and four thousand seven hundred and twenty eight. And United Construction and Forestry Load Bucket for the Loader, fifteen thousand seven hundred and sixty five dollars.
Motion we approve, one have an action.
Motion by Ken, second by Chris. Did Matt?
Today, I hope I didn't hear from you.
At the meeting last night, he was hoping you were there, he had. He wanted us, he wanted you to. Do something about the fuel.
Oh, that that, at the them filling up the buses at the Public Works Department?
Yes.
Yeah, do you have a, do you want to, do you have a feeling on that, Dan? Right. It it is up now.
Yep, and. Discussing some logistics of bus traffic. The diesel pump is.
I don't, I don't have any any real concerns with it if Dan is okay with it.
We're gonna build them for the diesel they use.
Yes, yes. We.
I have no objection.
Apparently, we used to. We used to bill them, and then through whatever reason, whether it was turnover in the office, they started sort of billing themselves, and then we didn't have a lot of. Confidence, I don't think, in that we were getting all of the bills, so that's kind of why the practice stopped, but I think that now that we have. A way to manage it, we think that.
Yeah, the issue that arrives happened before my time.
Right, me too, I'm kind of just repeating what I've heard through through the grapevine, so that.
But it's really just moving on to the department's street, I know, I need to be. We went through this last year. Yeah, the system crashed completely. So do we not have any history? Well, the the. You're on, I provided you. Thirty forty five days ago was. Was recovered information spanned from November until. But that only gave you usage, you didn't give me like a dollar figure. Well, that that's.
We can work on this.
I have to break it all up and then create a bill to still not beat the school department, which is. That that's where it's kind of going. You're gonna say it's one of the school department, you just all put system.
Yeah, no, I agree.
So I was, maybe I didn't understand correctly, I thought we had an automated system where the the. The the bus would come in and have a number and punch that number in, the gallons would get recorded to that number, and then it's just a matter of printing a report out and. Is that not the case? I mean, if you have to do this by hand, then I wouldn't be in favor of that.
Well, I inherited this system, and when I started the system of non-function. It took me. Well, it took me till the end of January, so it took me ninety days to get a functioning system. At the end of February, I went to run reports, the system crashed again. I had people come back. We'd have it up and running, and I've generated reports, I had not forwarded to you. But no, I have not, I've not. The system generates usage, but as far as doing you, I would have to then break out every line and make an invoice, which. You know, I I I do.
How about we take a little time to figure out, school is gonna be over here in a couple of months, we can talk about this over the summer, figure out a way to do it, and they can start doing it next year, I wouldn't want to. With all this, sort of, nobody's really sure how it works, I don't think we should just let them stop pulling in there right now. Right, exactly, but we have time, if they can continue their practice for the rest of the school year, we're just running out, you know, fairly quickly, we can. We can try to do something for their next next year.
As long as we're not, we're not, you know, putting a lot of effort and manpower and hours and money into.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. And if we need more. Software or a different thing, we we can have that conversation with them too, and say, you know, pony up if you want to use our pumps, you can pay for the.
There has to be a software program.
There has to be some way that we can.
Well, there is, I mean, there is.
Most cost effective system, you know, the bottom of the, you know, get the job done and then in. It's, thank you, it's our thing, and I've got it working, but the million function is manual, so. Yeah, so he gave me the usage report, and I just assumed it must have been something going to the town on this, and we. I didn't know I needed to like convert it, my own invoice or something.
From liters to gallons.
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
I mean, the reality of it is, they're driving school buses, you know, two, three miles, the closest piece of place, and filling it there, and say it's, say it's a school department. The 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 time and fuel to get to the closest piece of.
So my comment on this would be that that I would think that. If the school department was willing to share the expense of putting a a more state-of-the-art system in a a fuel card system like Fuel Writer, whatever. You want to do, like Dice Arts has down in Auburn, where any truck from any place that has a card and it pulls in and. And it automatically generates a bill to that account number. If if we have something like that in place, then I certainly would be opposed to it, I just don't think we should get involved in manually billing anybody for anything. Fire department would be the exception.
And make a motion we adjourn, did we already? Were we second, I forget where we were?